Well, I know, you're up here now.
Yeah, you got me, give me a carry here, huh?
Yeah.
Maybe. The last time I was up here, and it was my first time being up here, I got a little schooling on what a little bit of nervousness can do to you, make you screw up something you've done maybe fifteen, sixteen thousand times in your lifetime. Especially when I left Word Indivisible out of the pledge of allegiance, I saw all the boy scouts' heads snap over his head. So it reminded me of when we put the pastor in place at my church, and he was a relatively senior pastor, been at the business for about fifteen years, so he kind of knew what was going on, the ins and outs of it. One time I was up at the pulpit, and I noticed that he had the Lord's Prayer in bold type right there taped on the pulpit. So I went back to him, I said, "Pastor, why do you have the Lord's Prayer taped up there? I mean, you've been at it for fifteen years, you ought to know that by now." He said, "Well, son, that's just something you don't want to screw up." Well, I know exactly how he feels now. So, are we ready to start this? Call, meeting to order. Roll call. Joe Menard?
Here.
Michelle Waddell?
Here.
Melissa Goodbogut?
Here.
Lloyd Johnson?
Here.
Greg Gimmins, president. If you'll join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance, allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have one open forum request to be added to the agenda for Ben Cool. He'll start the interview. And that is to make a comment in reference to Parks Watson. You need to make a motion to add that to the agenda?
No, turn it off.
Okay.
It's number eleven, it's open forum.
Have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that. Joe?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries five oh. Bring your agenda to the consent items on the agenda. Please note that the minutes for the special meeting were revised, and the revision was to add the statute by which that was a closed meeting.
Can I ask a question, Wendy Anna, accounts? I did, I know you asked earlier, I remember that. We paid two eighteen oh eight for the preserves, right? To this Wright County, the Montrose. Is, when and do we need to pay taxes on that? Do you know?
Uh, we'll get a tax statement and.
Okay, but we do. Go ahead.
We'll have to pay taxes on it.
I'll make a motion then to approve the consent agenda with the revised minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Hi.
Joe?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Then items are approved. Is Joanne here?
No.
Okay, we'll move that further down.
Are you talking about EDA?
We have the EDA.
That's just part of the consent agenda.
Consent, she didn't talk about it.
No, she just wanted to put on there, you approved it at your EDA meeting?
We did.
However, the housing study, the grant that we received, we received in our general fund, and the general fund is paying for the market study, so she just wanted the council to approve it in the consent agenda since it's also part of the general fund rather than EDA.
Okay.
So that's why we approved the consent agenda.
And I do have a copy that you're with me, if someone would like to see it. The draft, anyway. Okay, then we're ready to move to the Wright County Sheriff's Department report. Okay, number four. Are we getting something from them, or is coming to the city, Wendy?
I haven't seen anything for the new year yet.
Would you report back that we'd like to see a report of the actions that are taken within the city and the police report issues?
Yeah, that usually comes quarterly.
Yeah, we usually do a quarterly activity report.
And I do know that not currently has offered to meet with council, we haven't ever had any questions, so.
Okay, then we'll move to the reports from the city, the monthly activity report.
That's the meetings we want to?
Um, I went to the league's experienced officials. I wouldn't really recommend it moving forward. It wasn't, I thought the newly elected was a lot more qualitative than this one, so, I don't know, some of it was okay, but I don't think I'd go back. I went to, let's see, I'll say Park and Rec, but we'll talk about that one later.
I attended the newly elected officials conference, and there were plenty of good takeaways from that, I think Melissa, Greg, and I can all agree on that. Lots of good information, lots of information to bring home, lots of good, you know, brainstorming activities for all of us. And then I also attended the Montrose Daze Committee last night, and they were wondering if there's any issues with putting fish fry tickets at City Hall.
No, we're a sell for.
Yeah, sold, dropped, sold. For that.
Good.
And the date? February twenty seventh.
Four thirty?
Seven thirty. Are there still other volunteers?
Yes. Melissa?
Um, I went to the newly elected officials conference as well, and same thing, there was a lot of great networking, especially those cities that are similar to ours, which is very helpful. And then also, we do have an update on the annual, we're gonna have to bring it up early for the evening, so I'll save it for that later.
Okay, Lloyd?
I just took an EDA meeting, it was the only meeting I made this month.
I attended the VFW meeting, the fire department meeting, the personnel meeting, meeting with Joe, attended the Wright County Tax Assessment meeting with Jason, and also attended the Fire Relief Annual Dinner, and part of that, I want to thank the Montrose Methodist Church for providing desserts for that. And then I also attended the League of Minnesota Cities Newly Elected Officials Training, and attended Mayor Coleman's Parade of Mayors at the Winter Carnival, the torchlight parade, as well as Mayor Coleman's invite to reception afterwards as well. The business. Okay, administration.
I have a couple items on the agenda. First one is Resolution Number 2015 dash oh nine. It is authorizing summary publication of the ethics ordinance that was passed, ordinance back in November, actually, that was passed, and this is just, this is just the resolution allowing me to publish only the summary, showing the parts that were changed, rather than publishing the entire ordinance, which is quite costly. So it's just a motion to approve the resolution to publish the summary.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2015 dash oh nine. I'll second it.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
The second item I have is also a resolution to publish the summary of the water rate ordinance that was changed at the January meeting. It's also just to publish the changes, not the entire ordinance.
I'm making a motion to approve the Resolution 2015 dash ten. I'll second that.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries five oh. Any else on administration?
That's it.
Attorney, Mike, you have a report. Engineers report.
I have two items this evening. First, the mayor mentioned that I was at the assessment hearing, or I should say public hearing, continuation of public hearing for kind of ditch thirty-eight. And it was the redetermination of benefits for that ditch that Wright County put on. There's a quite a bit of information that I'd like to review with the council, kind of get you guys up to speed on that project. This is a project that, first of all, ditch thirty-eight is, is a county ditch that is located on the southwest side of the city of Montrose. It runs through a portion of the city waverly, a portion of the township, and a portion of the city of Montrose. So it's a county ditch, and I would like to, there's some drainage issues with that, with that ditch, and we're gonna be talking about that, and specifically, the council is gonna be talking about that a lot in the next coming, probably, couple of years. And fixing that ditch to get rid of some issues there. So I'd like to kind of get the council up to speed on that, so they know what that's all about, and decisions that we need to make moving forward, and how that's gonna affect the city of Montrose and its residents. So it was suggested that maybe we could schedule a workshop for that. And my second item, before we go on further discussion about what the workshop might be, would be Rolling Meadows Park, or I should say the regional park, I guess, up in Rolling Meadows. We're kind of at a point where I need some further direction from council on that, or if that's the wishes of council. So again, there's three new council members there, so I'd probably unofficially get you guys all up to speed on that, as far as where we've been, the direction we're going, and where you want to go from here. So if we could combine those in the workshop, I'm not sure if, I know typically, the fourth Monday of the month is been reserved, or unofficially reserved for those types of meetings, so I wouldn't be available that evening if you guys are available.
Can we look at that as a workshop, then, and set that for the fourth on Monday?
I think that's February twenty-third.
Yep, February twenty-third.
What time? We can hold it at City Hall, so I guess whatever time works for everybody.
Are you guys available earlier than, say, second, when you do it earlier in the day?
I love that Monday.
I love that Monday. Lloyd, you available?
Go, what time are you available? Um, I'm available anytime, just.
Yeah, anytime.
Five o'clock. Five o'clock.
So, February twenty-third at five p.m. at City Hall.
I will post that.
That's all I have. How does it work?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. And page fifty-three and page fifty-four in your packet are a couple quotes for, in two thousand fifteen, we budgeted to replace our aging Bobcat. And after several weeks of negotiations, we locked down some prices for trading. We approached a lot of equipment out of Loretto, and also farm right equipment out of Dassel. They're very competitive. And the winning quote, or lowest quote, that we received is to trade for a new two thousand fifteen S six fifty, which is identical machine that we have now, and, and to an eighty-five hundred dollars difference. We're looking for a motion to, from the council, to approve the trade and get our new machine here.
What kind of service agreement do they have on those of the new machine?
It's a one-year unlimited war ticket.
One-year unlimited, both over the same on that?
That is correct. That is roughly the same price we paid for that machine back when we bought it in two thousand one.
The trade in?
Correct. And that machine has, every hour that we put on it has been well-used. We constructed a disc golf course with that. Two years of extreme snowfall, and it's, we use it just about every day, it's a vital piece of our equipment.
Any discussion? A motion to approve the purchase of the Bobcat, Tom, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Bobcat.
I'll second that.
Melissa?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
Five o'clock. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, fire department report.
Good evening, council, mayor, and city staff. First thing in your packet, page number fifty-five, is just the monthly activity report for what we've been up to this month. That's just for an informational item for you guys at this point. On page fifty-six through sixty-six is the two thousand fourteen annual report of the Montrose Fire Department. I am looking for a motion to approve and accept that report tonight. The only thing that's really special to highlight, and I don't know if this was brought up by Jason in the past, is in two thousand fourteen, we went through an ISO audit, that's an insurance service organization audit. Prior to going through it this time, the last time it was completed was in nineteen ninety-nine. They're hoping now with everything being more electronic to do it every five years. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, we were a six-nine community, six within the city limits, and a nine outside the city limits. And after this year's assessment, we are now listed as a four-six community, four within the city and six outside the city limits. And they grade both public works on our water usage, water flow rates, as well as the fire department and our emergency communications dispatch center up in Buffalo, so that's quite an improvement, and it will help insurance costs, especially for businesses. Other than that, it's pretty much just the same old stuff, just kind of a review of two thousand fourteen, a review of the calls, what types of calls we have, and special things as far as that goes, so.
How are the leveling of calls, I know it's a hundred and sixty-seven calls this year, is that pretty standard?
That is our average. The previous two years were very high, busy years for us. In two thousand twelve, we had two hundred and fifty-seven calls, in two thousand thirteen, we had two hundred and eight calls. So it's a little bit of a spike there. Our average is usually right around that one seventy-five mark.
Any discussion on the report? Have a motion to approve the fire department report?
I'll make a motion to approve the Wright County two thousand fourteen annual report.
Second?
I'll second it.
Lloyd has a second? Joe?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
And the annual report will be posted on the city website under the Fire Department tab, for anybody to view. The next thing in your packet, page number sixty-seven, I'm looking for a motion to purchase a Samsung SCX fifty-nine thirty-five F N digital copier, it's a multi-function printer, copier, scanner, through Minnesota Computer Systems. It's the same company that City Hall uses, came to recommend from City Hall, the stuff and their prices, better than what I thought it was gonna be as far as what other companies might offer for the same type of service. Looking for the purchase of the copier itself for one thousand forty-nine dollars, as well as going to a service agreement for one, or excuse me, point zero one seven five cents per copy. That covers the toner, service, any setup, all that kind of stuff with it, so.
How many companies do we hear?
It's hard to say because we don't have a copy machine right now. The copy machine we have was donated to us by the Lions that lasted us about three weeks, and then it kind of went kaput. That one is no longer serviceable, they can't get parts for it. To get it repaired, he said, pretty proud to be looking at, buy six hundred dollars because they have to go scrub for parts, and they don't have a tech that can do it. It would more so be used for the scanning capabilities of it, trying to get things a little bit more on the paperless side, so it'd be more so for that. But our current printer that we have, it takes, I can only do maybe two scans a minute, but this one you can do twenty-eight to thirty. So it'll speed things up a little bit. Printing is much faster as well, so.
Now, did you have this in your budget, or?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah, it's, you know, computer equipment, miscellaneous equipment type.
Sure.
Okay.
Just a little background, the copier he's talking about, the city owned, I think it was two copiers ago already, and the Lions bought it from the city and used it probably for seven, probably almost ten years, and then didn't want it anymore, so they gave it to the fire department, and it has now died. So it's probably twelve to fifteen-year-old copier.
And we would be okay with, like, when he's made copies during a city council meeting or something, or any kind of meeting that's over here, she can by all means go over there and use that copy machine to make copies, so she doesn't have to run over to City Hall or anything like that, so. That was kind of part of the deal when we took on that copier, so.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion not to have a hand-me-down copy for the fire department?
I'll make a motion to approve the fire department buying a new copy, copier for a thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Michelle, that's a good one.
I'll second it.
Lloyd's second. Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
Next, I'm just looking for some direction from the council regarding selling our old fire engine, which is currently in storage.
Did we ever put enough for goods or advertise it?
To my knowledge, we have not done anything with it at this point.
Have we gotten an appraisal?
No.
Might be good to look at an appraisal, see what, you know, reasonably what we should be getting for it, and then we can start looking at being able to market it.
I spoke with Andy Cratt, our city attorney, and as long as it is under twenty-five thousand dollars, you do not need sealed bids. You can just advertise it wherever you want to and sell it. I know the last time you sold a vehicle, you, I know in Mike was so cheap, he did seal bids just because somebody was bickering back and forth on the price, rather than him having to deal with it. He just did seal bids, but you don't need, it's not a requirement unless it's over twenty-five
So let's look at moving forward with an appraisal, and then we can move forward to first season.
Who would you like me to approach for an appraisal, just like the person who we bought the truck, are you the truck from?
It might be a good idea, because I have a good one, who'd be able to provide a easier, you know, appraisal in reference to our department.
Okay. I will get the appraisal and let you all know where that comes back at.
Thanks. Do you need approval now to move forward with the sale?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so, I think you can just.
You're gonna come back.
Yeah, I'll come back with the appraisal, if it's not, nothing that's gonna happen overnight this year, so. Next, two things are just quick informational items, just an update on the Relief Association Dinner and Raffle. We sold two hundred and twenty-one dinners, plus thirty-four children dinners. There's a great turnout, better than what we expected, raffle's very well done, went through some awards there as well. The four firefighters who got off probation were, received their badges and certificates. Jason Chafens, I presented him with his fire chief's helmet and the fire chief's badge for his time that he spent as fire chief. And we also did a firefighter of the year award, this was the first time that we did that, and that was given to Kelly Stoll for this year, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
And kudos for having the firefighter of the year being elected from the end. I know that's very good.
Yes.
That's a firefighter's own award.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
We had our meeting on February third. We did discuss a couple things, we talked about, one of them was the community gardens. Last year, we started the community garden program. There's been one in Northridge Park for a number of years, and we wanted to move it, but we left the existing garden there for a couple of gardeners, and moved the other ones out to Rolling Meadows, to the open area. We were only charging twenty dollars per, per person or per plot to use it for the summer to try to cover some of the cost of, of tilling of the garden and that kind of stuff. We had really high water usage at the community gardens, so I'm not sure where we want to go with it from here. The one garden out at Northridge, are out at Rolling Meadows, used sixty thousand gallons of water to water their garden. So we need to have some discussion on the community garden. I think Councilmember Otto was gonna check with a couple other neighboring cities and see what they charge for their community gardens, and bring it back to the March Park meeting, so we can go from there. See if we need to raise our price a little, or not let them water, I'm not sure. See if we need to raise our price a little or not let them water. I'm not sure. 60,000 gallons is a lot of water to water a garden, so.
Don't we have that they have to be the level of monitoring we can't just turn it on and come back next week?
But we don't stand there and enforce it, so they turn it on and forget to shut it off, or I'm not sure which. A couple of other things we talked about were some spring, summer ideas, and one of them that seemed to really be popular was doing like a volleyball game day out in Northridge Park. A lot of people don't know we have a volleyball court in Northridge Park. So Jesse Lesna, who's on the park commission, was going to prepare some kind of a short notice that we can put out on Facebook. We put it on the city's Facebook webpage. He was going to put it out on the next, is it called Next Door? To see if we can, if we have interest in that, and if there is, we'll probably host a day of volleyball in the park. Couple other ideas they had was maybe hosting a day at the disc golf course, just some kind of a tournament. Nothing really that we're going to give away prizes or spend a lot of money, just to get people out into the park. Maybe a non-competitive softball league or scavenger hunt throughout the park. So that'll be more discussed at the March meeting with Park Rec. We also are going to send out a notice to all of the volunteer organizations in town on March 3rd, which is our next park meeting. We'd like to have a short meeting with all the volunteer organizations and just talk to them about getting together maybe quarterly or how often they want to get together and see how everybody can help each other out. So those invitations will be going out, or the meeting notices will be going out. We'll write it, I think Michelle and I are going to write it tomorrow. We'll get it out the next day or so. And the only other thing we had was Open Gym has been very successful so far this year. There's been so many people at Open Gym that they are switching from the small gym now to the bigger gym from the more room. So it's, it's getting to be very, very popular and it's a great event going on for everybody. That was it.
Anything, Brett?
Okay, whole business. Personnel meeting, we set that at the second Monday of the month at City Hall. And as I understand it, there was a policy issue for two, five weeks of the meetings. Is that correct, Michelle?
We were doing it the first and third, the opposite of council. That's all going to be the second. Right? That's what we were doing.
We were meeting the first and third.
Tuesday.
First and third Tuesday.
So are you going the first and third and Monday then?
We were just going to meet one. We're just, we're just going to meet that Monday of the council meeting since everybody's all in council.
So we.
We just put that on the agenda. If we get a motion made, then we don't have to post it every week like we used to. We had just a set date and we don't have to post it.
Was there a need to do a second meeting monthly or just one?
We just kind of started about this too because we had so much more on it than just like the council. We dropped it down a little bit.
A motion to have the personnel meeting on the second Monday of the month at 9:00 AM at City Hall?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel meeting to be on the second Monday of the month at 9:00 AM at City Hall.
Second?
I'll second.
Jill made first and Michelle second. And I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Melissa carries my vote. Okay, on to new business. What board of appeal and equalization dates?
The date has been set by the county for April 27th, which is the fourth Monday of the month in April. If that date works for the council, I will go ahead and send in the notice. It'll be at 6 o'clock here at the community center. This is just the meeting itself, the meeting that the county comes and we have the meeting for any residents that want to come and speak about their tax base or the assessment of their property. So if that date works.
That date works for me.
It would be at 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
Monday at 6 o'clock, yeah.
Okay, we need a motion to approve that? I don't think so.
I don't think you do for deposits. Yeah, deposits here, it's okay with you guys.
Okay, and then training classes?
Training classes are being offered again by the state. Somebody, you need people to go to the training classes in order to hold the board of appeals and equalization meeting. If we have no one trained, we cannot have the meeting that gets held at the county itself. And right now, currently the only one that is trained is Lloyd. So if we can have somebody else go, that would be great. They are offering some catch-up classes because they do realize that people have gone through elections. So they're doing some catch-up classes. I am, the closest ones would be Maple Grove. There's one on Thursday, March 19th at 6:30, and I see there's one in Waiton Park at 6 o'clock on Wednesday, the 25th. Those are the two closest ones.
Which day, when's the first day PM?
March 19th in Maple Grove at 6:30 PM. Maple Grove. Government Center. The other.
Is what day it means?
Thursday.
Thursday. The one at Sterns County Service Center, which is in Waiton Park, is on Wednesday, March 25th, and that one's at 6:00 PM. Yeah.
I can attend on March 19th. I'd like, I have either Jill or Melissa attend as well because you have a full term. And that way we would have someone full term for another person there.
I, I can certainly do it, Jill.
Either way. If you both want to go, we can go. On the 19th in Maple Grove. First for me.
You just have three.
I'll, I'll three of you, Jill?
Yeah.
So on March 19th in Maple Grove? I will get you registered right away. Great.
Anything else?
That's all for the, for that, for what it is.
Beyond the yellow ribbon?
All right, so as part of our action plan, we have to update the city council and the city basically every six months on what we are doing. So this is our, our first six months update, so we're going to do it February and August. So far, we have one section left to do in our action plan. And then we will be spending the next couple of months getting all of the pieces together, getting it onto paper and sending it off to a representative at the state to get feedback so that when we actually do submit it to the state, we will hopefully get approval the first time. And our goal is still to have our ceremony during Montrose Days this coming summer, assuming that the state approves our action plan. Even though we are not technically certified as Yellow Ribbon City, we have already helped two families so far. One very minimally, but another one we have helped quite a bit. So we're always looking for volunteers in any capacity. But we are also open to obviously helping more people. We do have quite a few resources. We've had quite a few people reach out when we've asked for volunteers, which is wonderful. The other thing that we have coming up in April, on April 25th, we are going to be having a 5K fundraiser so that we can raise funds to become a nonprofit, but also have some funds available to help people who might need it. Whether that's, not to just, you know, give them money outright, but it's more to help people, you know, if they need something built, we can supply the labor, but then we'll also pay for materials and other things like that, or maybe whatever, you know, training might come up, things like that that we might need. The 5K is going to be at 8:30 at night. It is starting and ending at Jackie B's. It is on Saturday night. The theme is, it's called Light Up the Night for Heroes, and the theme is a glow-in-the-dark theme. So all racers are encouraged to wear fluorescent clothing, glow-in-the-dark paint, glow sticks, all kinds of stuff so that although the race course will be lighted, it will still be dark so that they can have that tendency. But our goal is to have enough people so we can raise the necessary funds that we're looking for. And then after the race is over, we do also have a DJ who will be at Jackie B's. And we will, Jackie B's has opened up the restaurant to us for the rest of the evening so that we'll be open to any racers and also open to the public who might want to come in and help support our organization as well.
What's the cost?
The cost, pre-registration is $25. $25. Day of registration is 35. We do also have two people, if two people register in advance, it's $40. Day of registration for two people is 55. All service members can run for free, assuming they have proof of their service, their ID card or whatever it is. So service members are free. We are also contacting the state. We'll be sending a note with their Beyond the Yellow Ribbon emails, which goes out to thousands of service members across the state. So we're hoping that we get quite a few people from other areas that come into town for that.
Where do you get registration forms?
Registration forms currently right now, there's a link on our Facebook页面 page. We don't have paper ones yet. Lori's working on getting our flyers and everything else printed out. So, but yes, there is a link with all of the information about the race on our Facebook页面 page, including registration and where to send it to.
Don't you have some flyers?
Yes, yep. The flyers are on it, yes.
And your Facebook is just Beyond the Yellow Ribbon?
Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of Montrose, yep. And as of right now, that's where we're at.
So when you go over that evening to like to Jackie B's, are they donating any of the money that's raised that night or anything?
No.
I don't run, so why would I go? Probably have us supported somehow or something.
Kind of, but not really. We're still working, working on a deal with Brian to see if we can do something similar to that or at least offer a discount to anybody who does come, you know, appetizers or drinks or something like that. We also will have a silent auction in the back room of Jackie B's so that, you know, if you don't want to run, you can always come and then check that out and just come and enjoy it. That means we have a DJ who generously is donating his home services for the night. So he will be there before the race as everybody's warming up, and then after it starts, he's going to move into Jackie B's and he'll be there all night.
So do you have provisions for us turtles of my own stomach, of course?
You can, we've had, we've had people asking if we can bring your pets, kids. I mean, people, there is, I did have someone emailing us about, you know, walking and any ability is perfectly acceptable. We just want people to, to, even if you don't race, just to get out and help celebrate these people. Because I have a feeling that once it goes out to the state, we're going to get a big response from our service members. And we are trying to have, commence a couple of local ones to run the race in fully uniform. So we'll see how that goes.
No, my uniform's if I can run a race and don't fit. I was watching your meeting back then. Did you coordinate with the FFW to assist with that as well?
I'm not, that's my next, I plan on going to their next meeting.
I'm sure they will.
Yep, because we would like the honor to dinner, the rights to do.
Be really good.
That kind of stuff, so. So we do still have a few details to work out, but those are the basic details so that, you know, we can get it out there and we can get a lot of people out from the community out there too, as well as outside people too. I think that would be a really good, a really good showcase for our community.
Do you have a T-shirt?
We're working on that too. The runners will get the first, I think we're looking at about the first 100 runners that sign up will get a T-shirt. We are possibly thinking about having some for sale if people are interested in purchasing them. So that's, we're working on the design with quotes right now, so.
Perfect.
It's April 25th. It's a Saturday night. Yep.
Okay, excellent mind for goal setting. One of the things that I'd like to do is revisit what the goals are for each member of the council. So if you would send me by email, my Montrose email is working now. So if you would send me an email of what your three top goals are for the city in your tenure, or at least for this year or maybe next year, in the next few years. That way we can work those together and then we can start pulling together a goal, range and focus and look at a vision as to how we move down the road and where we're going for this, for this council and this city. So if you want to push those to me by email, I'd appreciate it. If you have more than three, by all means, push them in there. But I'd like to see at least three of your primary goals, what you want to accomplish in this term for the remainder of your terms here, or in the, the later of this term. And then we'll pull those together and we'll look at where our vision is and where we're going down the road. And I've also worked with the city as to some of that as well. So we're looking forward and setting some goals that we have as far as the city functions. So we look at those and eventually we'll build some, we're looking at saving towards the future and what we have planned. So we're not playing catch-up so much so we can look at where we're at with those things. Okay? So if you can maybe do that soonest, I'd like to see them very soon. And we've also got to do some goal setting for the EEA as well. So if you have some input for goal setting for EEA, let me know what that is as well.
Was there a meeting planned then, EEA?
Yeah, there is a meeting planned. I believe that's the 17th, if I'm not mistaken, February 17th at?
Six.
6 o'clock.
Will she go send an email or something?
I think she already did.
Yeah, I know that she did. She said she was going to, isn't it?
There'll be a pack, I'm sure.
One time, six? City Hall?
Yes.
City Hall. And let's move to the council staff retreat. When do you want to give us some history on that?
In the past, we have, every other year, we've had a retreat. So when the new council comes on, we've had a retreat. And we've had it, the last number of years, we've had it just here at the community center. And I think for the two past times that we've done it, we've had a company, I think it's called Bryman-Furzman, something like Brymeier Furzman, I think, but it's, Richard Furzman and his wife are part of it. And they're the ones that have come out and done our part of the retreat. It's been with council, myself, Sean, and any of the, Justin or Joanne, any council staff want to come, they've come. And we all get together for the last, I think the first one we did a couple of years ago, or four or five years ago, did on a Saturday. But I think the last we did a year, two years ago, we did it on a weekday. Started about 9:00 o'clock in the morning and went till I don't know, 3:00 or 5:00 or something, had lunch. It's, it's really positive, you know, they come in with a real positive attitude, try to get everybody motivated. They do the same thing that Greg just talked about. They'll work with the goal setting. So if everybody has their three goals that they integrate, that's one thing they would focus on. Working on, getting everybody working together on the same thing, seeing what everybody wants to see.
They could focus on the ones we set for last.
And yep, they'll go over the ones that we set for the last time, and I will go through and find those. I know we have them in the office somewhere as well. I'll get those out and see what we, you know, what we've accomplished so far that was said. So if that's something you guys think you'd be interested in doing, I can get ahold of them, hold of Richard and see what works for them. I don't know, like you guys.
What day works best for you?
It would be a whole day, so you guys would have to take off like a day of work, unless you want to do it on the weekend. You can, we can do it on the Saturday.
On a Saturday with me?
Two years ago, we did it on a weekday, but four years ago, we did it on a Saturday.
I hope I have all my meetings today.
I, I have a little weekend, honestly.
I would tell.
At work weekends.
What time do you get off?
I start at 7:00. I start at seven, I'll be up at six.
So it means taking a day off for everybody else, huh?
Don't you, are you off every other?
I'm off every other.
We can work on every other weekend, maybe work on a Saturday, and let's look at your schedule and see if we can't do a Saturday that works for everybody, get some closed dates on Saturdays and push that to us.
What's the cost of this?
I'll find out what they are and bring it back, I can bring it to the next.
You have something budgeted.
We, we do budget for one, yes, every two years we budget for one, um, so I can find out from them what it would cost to do it on a Saturday and bring it to the meeting that we have set for the twenty-third of this one, that last meeting.
Okay, that works.
So I'll get some dates from him and some cost.
Anything further for the good of the city? I have a, uh, open forum, Ben?
Good evening, council, I am asking for the release of the documentation that was used in the illegal and falsified, um, with the falsified allegations that was used to terminate Mark Swanson. I know that this documentation was in several council members' hands during the open portion of this illegal meeting, and then, and during the closed portion, I was then allowed to see it, so I'm asking for this to be released and given to the public so that they can know what she was terminated for, and can find out more of the facts. Thank you.
And I'm going to defer that one for a little council, if that has to go around to, to the study. Absolutely. Take a look. Are there any acknowledgements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one that did not, uh, make the press at press time. I have an employee, Mr. Dan Menzel, that is, uh, has completed one year's service, I'd like to acknowledge him for that.
Congratulations, Dan. Any others?
Again, I'd like to thank the Methodist Church for providing the treats and cake for our fire department dinner, that was excellent, and I, I forgot them when I was doing my announcements during that, so Kevin didn't poke me hard enough, but again, I'd like to thank them very much for, for being there and taking care of the fire department, and, uh, appreciate their support, and I enjoyed the occasion.
Anything further? Hearing nothing, is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion for adjournment. I'll second.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries, I vote, we stand as per.